Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now seven o'clock in the evening. I would like to call the Board of Selectmen. Is it this time that we would like to do the pledge in the moment of silence? Okay? So if you wanted to deal with that. Okay, very good. All rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our liberty, justice, and liberty.
If you could remain standing, please. I would like you all to stand for a moment of silence for all members of the Town of Upton who have passed away over the last year, who were part of the departments and committees and all the things that they did for the Town of Upton. Moment of silence. Thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to make a real list of those people who are going to be visitors here at the town meeting. So I'd like to have a motion after we read this. Joseph Layden, Town Manager, Brian Mazur, Hoplin Page, Mormon Coleman, Superintendent, Mandan Updike, Regional School District, Kenny Costa, Accountant, Jessica Gomez, Pleasure Collector, Paul Marchand, Town Employee, Matthew Bechtel, Library, Dr. Fitzpatrick, Jackson Valley, Annual Tech, Jay Byer, Mandan Upton School District. Is there a motion to accept those visitors?
Hello, Mr. Marry.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor signify by saying your green card up in the air. Thank you. Put them down. Red cards up in the air. Now, okay, passage unanimously. You know, I thought I'd at least get through my stuff at the beginning before that happened, but oh, well. I'm working on it, folks. I'm working on it. The green card, red card stuff. Okay, next. I want to thank all the individuals who've helped to set up the town meeting. Mandan Updike, Regional School District, Mr. Stony, Ziegert, Yelf, Town Clerk, Board of Upton's Office. Thank you very much. Okay? I'd like to ask that all personal devices that you have, ta-da, either turn them on or put them on vibrator sound. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Now, what I typically do is I ask anybody who's here for the very, very first time at a town meeting, I'd like to ask if you could rise and the rest of us could give you a look. So anybody here for the first time, stand up, please. Great, great. Thank you very much. So for all the rest of you, show them how it's supposed to be done so that they'll come back again. All right? Okay, good. Thank you. All right. So before we get into the general format of the meeting, I just have a couple of comments that I would wish to make to everybody. So I've been moderator for a long time. Fortunately, I'm at a point in my life where I could retire from full-time work. That's a wonderful thing. I know a lot of you out there say, "What? Him retiring from full-time work? My God, he'll look that old." But I can do that. So in the process of doing that, I asked my daughter, I go, "Hmm, where does the town need me to help with?" And she says, "Dad, they need a van driver up at the senior center." Hmm, that sounds interesting. So, long story short, I went through the process of interviewing for the van driver, and I knew it would be like, "Oh, I'm the moderator. The van driver can I do both things?" So I talked with the ethics people. I talked with the town manager, Board of Selectmen, everybody in the world, what I'm supposed to talk to, to see it work. Well, it's legal to do that. I signed a bunch of pieces of paper. I answered a whole bunch of questions. And it is okay for me to be a van driver and to be the town moderator. Okay? I'm not the first person in the state that has done this, and I won't be the last. I'm not even the first person in town that has done this. So it's all okay if you have any questions on this here. If you have any questions, talk to me about it. I have to be meeting, I'll talk to the town manager just so that we can let you know what the, all the process was. So just wanted to get that out there. Thank you very much. Okay, good. Next thing we have. So, general format of the meeting. We have a warrant that's been posted. It's legal, as the Town Clerk said. We have a bunch of articles on there. We're going to go through the articles, one by one. There's a bunch of them. Let me put into what's called a consent calendar at the beginning. I'll explain what that means in a minute. And as each article becomes a motion, there'll be discussion, possibly. If it's financial stuff, Finance Committee will have something to say. If it's CPC, the Conservative Committee will have things. If it's Planning Board issues or other departments that have to make comments, they will make those comments. Then we will discuss the motion. And we'll do it with, from this microphone here. Okay? If you think you're going to have to have something to say sometime in the meeting, it's good to get closer to the microphone. That way you don't put rocks aside to get to it. Okay? That way we can move things along quickly. Only one person can speak at a time. That's what makes it work. More than one person speaks at a time, then it doesn't. So just keep that in mind as we're going through the meeting. There might be a time when you say, "Hey, I want to amend what's on the motion" on the floor. You can do that. You state what your amendment is. You have to have it in writing so we can get it officially to us and see what it looks like exactly. We will then discuss the amendment, vote on it. If it passes, then we go back to the original motion as amended. If it doesn't pass, then we go back to the motion as it was in the first place. And that's how that works. Okay? Um, let's see. Oh, the first time you get up to speak, I'd like you to please state your name and your address so that we know that you are a resident of the community and that you are a registered voter. After that, you don't have to keep saying it all the time after that. Maybe the most important thing to say is that, and I've sort of alluded to this already, no personality type thing. So if someone's gotten up to say something and you have a real issue with what they've said, you just can't get up there and say, "Joe doesn't know what the heck he's talking about." What you can say is, "I have concerns with previous speakers who forgot to how much money they could cost to do this." And that's how you do that. Okay? You keep it civil. You keep it up on board. And that's worked in this town for a long, long time. And we need to keep on doing that. But I've been doing this for a long time. And maybe only three or four times, we've had issues with that. So if we do have an issue with it, this is what I will say. I'll say, "Sir and madam, please step back from the microphone." I will then inform them of what the issue is with respect to what they were saying. I will then ask the individual if they can continue in an appropriate way. If they say yes, I allow them to continue. If they say no, then they can just sit down. If the infraction continues, I will then ask the individual to take their seat. If they don't take their seat, I will ask the individual to leave the meeting. If they choose not to leave the meeting at that point, I will then ask the officer in the back to remove them from the meeting. Just so you know, we've never, ever had to get past me simply asking the person to please step back from the microphone. I've explained it for them, and when they're spoken again, they've been very civil. That's as far as it's ever gotten. I want that to continue, and I'm sure that it will continue. So, thank you. All right. Um, we're going to get to something called a consent calendar. Is there anything that needs to be said before I get to the consent calendar, Mr. Sinus?
Uh, yes, Mr. Marry.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brett Sinus of Barber's Park in Upton. And I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Steve Metellion for his six years of service to the Board. He didn't want me to do this, but I couldn't resist, so...
He's not a very strong listener.
As Steve's learned over the past six years. So, um, you know, Steve has been in the Town of Upton for a very long time, his entire life. His family's been here for a couple generations, and he's been a dedicated and loyal servant to all of you and to the community and to the townspeople. His heart and his desire and his drive and his work have been recognized. And certainly, he's set an example for me when I came onto the Board. And that perspective and influence is appreciated, and I hope that that will continue even as a citizen not on the Board. You have a lot of relationships and knowledge and perspective that I think really, really helps inform how the town has evolved. So thank you for your service. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Sinus. Okay. So what we're going to do now, we have 37 articles that are on the warrant. Twelve or so of those articles are articles that every single year, we discuss them. And it's the exact same thing every year because procedurally, we need to deal with these things every year. There's never any questions on them. So because of that, we put them into what's called a consent calendar, which would be, we will pass those articles as motions in one big vote at the beginning. So in doing that, we don't have to go through the process of doing all the motion stuff with those because it's exactly the same thing every single year. So what I want to do is just have you look briefly in your Finance Committee report, what those are, so I can tell you what they are briefly, and then we can just move on to the motion to do that. So if you want to follow along, return to page 41 in your Finance Committee report, if you have it. And at the top of the Finance Committee report, essentially is the warrant itself that has been posted. So the articles that we're going to put in the consent calendar are Article 1, which is the annual report. Article 5, which is the Water Enterprise Fund. We get money from both receipts and from raising appropriate. Article 6, which is the Wastewater Enterprise Fund. Article 7 is all the yearly revolving funds that we do. 8 are the Cable Fund, and that's paid for by receipts. Article 11 is what's called OHPA, which is Other Post-Deployment Benefits, and that's a raise in appropriate. Article 12, our Chapter 90 funds that we get from the state. 16 is the Conservation Fund, that goes way back to, I think, 1966. 17A, B, and C is the 17A, 10% CPC funds that go into historic, open space, housing. And then the Administration Fund is 17B. And 17C is the Town Hall Payment. And it's the numerical number. That's the correct number. There was a typo with the other, but that's fine. It's the numerical number. Um, let's see. And then 31 is the Board of Assessors Recertification. So again, I'm going to make a motion in a minute to have these funds moved by unanimous consent. As I'm reading through the numbers when I'm making the motion, if anybody wants to hold one of those, just yell "hold", and we'll just put that back on the regular calendar and deal with it when it comes up. Does that make sense? Good, thank you. Okay. So I will now make the motion to move those articles under the consent calendar. I move that the sound vote by unanimous consent. The following articles that have not been requested hold, those consent calendar articles being 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, 12, 16, 17A, 17B, 17C, and 31. Is there a second? Second. Very good. And since this is a unanimous consent calendar, I would like to ask everyone to hold up their green card to vote unanimously. Thank you very much. And I should not see a red card after the green cards go down because this is unanimous consent. Thank you very much. Those pass by unanimous consent. Beautiful. Okay. Now, I know that the, um, so we don't have the Finance Committee, um, excuse me, the budget yet. So Mr. Flaherty, did you or anybody want to speak about that yet? Or wait till we get to it, or what?
No, we can go.
Okay, we'll go. All righty. So we're actually very close to that anyways. So next article is Article 2. Does somebody have a motion for Article 2?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Sinus.
I move that the Town vote to approve Article 2 as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second for Article 2. So I, I would like to quickly read what that says because we have one of those moments. A lot of people know him because they used to be a teacher. This is a teachable moment, so just be patient with me. So it says, "I'm out that the Town vote to transfer $1,200 from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to pay unpaid bills from prior fiscal year." So when the town wants to pay unpaid bills from a prior fiscal year, we can't just have a majority. Not only that, we can't even have just a two-thirds majority. We have to have what's called a four-fifths majority because the state of Massachusetts, the legislature said, "Listen, if you're going to pay for bills from the previous year, you've got to really, really make sure that you want to do them." So we have what I call a super, super majority. So therefore, in order for this to pass, it has to be four fifths of a vote. Luckily, we're at an annual town meeting because it's only four fifths. If it was at a special town meeting, it would have to be nine tenths. Okay? So that's my little teachable moment for all of you here tonight. Thank you very much. So FinCon recommendation?
Favorable action, Mr. Marry.
Favorable action. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor, hold up your green cards. Okay, all opposed, hold up the red cards. It passes by unanimous consent. Good. Thank you, everybody. Pardon me with my teachable moment stuff once in a while. Okay. Article 3, motion for that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the Town vote to approve Article 3 as set forth in the warrant.
Okay, that is to transfer $7,000 from available funds for unpaid elected board stipends from the previous year. Now, you might think, "Wait a minute, this sounds like the exact same thing." It's a little bit different. This only requires a majority vote. But what happened was, I guess the stipends weren't paid last year, so what am I going to do it this year? That's basically it, right? Okay, good. FinCon recommendation?
Favorable action.
Favorable action by the FinCon. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those who favor, hold up your green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. Article 4. All right. So let's do this. Do you want to make a comment before the motion or after, Mr. Flaherty?
No, we do it afterwards or whenever necessary, sir.
Okay. So who's got the motion for Article 4?
I have it, Mr. Moderator. I move that the Town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all officers of the Town as provided by Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended to raise and appropriate $27,831,289 to defray expenses of the Town Departments for the ensuing year as set forth in items identified as total budget to be voted within the document entitled Finance Committee Report, Town of Upton, Massachusetts Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Recommendation, and not request hold and as amended, if applicable, by vote of Town Meeting for those items requested hold.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Move in seconded. Um, do you want to comment now, FinCon, or wait?
No. Go through that, Mr. Marry.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions you want to answer?
Very good. Thank you. So, um, again, those of you, except for a few of you that haven't been here before, what we just did with that consent calendar is basically the same thing we're going to do with the budget. We're going to go through the departments, and I'll go department by department. And if there's a particular line item that you wish to be held, you yell "hold", I'll call on you, and you can tell me which thing it is you want to have held. So what I want you to do at this point is go to page 15 of your Finance Committee report. Okay? So if you go to page 15, it says, "Upton Budget Fiscal Year 2024 Detail." What you'll see on the left is the account number, account name, budget from '22, budget from '23, and here's the magic column, Finance Committee Report Fiscal Year 2024. As I go through each department, those are the numbers that you need to be looking at if you want to hold something. Now, just to keep in mind, this report has been available like in paperback for about a week or so, but it's been on the website for a month, maybe? Thereabouts, Mr. Flaherty?
You are correct, Mr. Marry.
So therefore, you've all had plenty of time to look at this ahead of time if you felt the need to hold something. Okay? So therefore, I'm not going to read every single line item because you've had a chance to look at the line items ahead of time. So that being the case, when we go through it, I'll go through it relatively quickly, department by department. When you want to hold something, you're not holding an entire department. It's just a particular line item within that department. The last thing I want to say is this. This is a financial matter situation. If, for example, you have an issue with a department about something that's got nothing to do with the finances, this is not the time to hold something. If you want to hold something, it's because you have a question about a particular number in a particular department. Other stuff you have issues on, deal with that either through the department head or the Board of Selectmen. Okay? So again, it's column 3 that we're looking at. We've read this out. Okay, great. So first department, Town Meeting's Elections. Next department, Town Moderator. Next department, Board of Selectmen. Okay? Next department, Town Manager. Finance Committee. Reserve Fund. Finance Department. Capital Budget Committee. Legal Department. Tax Title Full Closure. Management Information Systems. Town Clerk. Register of Voters. Conservation Committee. Planning Board. Housing Authority. Town Public Buildings. Fire EMS. Code Enforcement. Emergency Management. Animal Control. DPW Parks, Forestry, and Cemetery.
Hold.
Hold. There's a hold in that department. Um, give me a sense for where, which one it is, please.
DPW Forest.
I'm sorry, what?
The DPW Cemetery.
Which particular line item? Oh.
It's a general question between that and 491, which is Cemetery. Do you want me to ask it now or not?
No, no, no. I just want to know which particular number you want held. So give me a sense of like the last four numbers when you look at the account name, the number there. Which number is it you're looking at?
Mr. Marry, I think she's questioning why we're calling something DPW Parks, Forestry, and Cemetery, and then Department 491 is also Cemetery.
Correct.
Oh.
It's not about the expense, it's about why we have to do that.
Okay. Thank you. So it has to do with the labeling. Um, who wants to answer that? Is that just a typo on the book or is it a specific reason?
It's a commission. This is the Cemetery.
Got it. Okay. Uh, the first one was Cemetery Commission. This is the cemetery, like expenses to take care of the cemetery that's under the DPW department. Does that make sense? For the person who held, I can't... Yeah, okay. So does that make sense? This is, in this section, it's people mowing the lawn, people taking care of the cemetery. Okay? That's what this is. The other one was the Cemetery Commission. Does that answer the question?
Under expenses, they have cemetery maintenance. How is that different from the Department of State?
Okay, um...
I just don't understand why you have two accounts. Isn't the commission under the DPW?
The Cemetery Department, okay. Someone else has to answer this, please. Unless it's a typo. I don't know. Is it a typo or not? Yes? Mr. Layden, please.
Joe Layden, Town Manager. So this first, uh, 294 is really for the operations as far as DPW staff, equipment, maintenance of parks, cemetery, and forestry. The maintenance of the actual grounds, the work that's done by the employees as well as the equipment, the mowers, the gas, the fertilizers, is done by the DPW department. The other expense where it's, the other budget where it is, the Cemetery Commission, is dealing with the operations of the commission itself, which is an elected body. So the responsibility for cemeteries fall under two things. One Cemetery Commission, but then the day-to-day maintenance, mowing, removing of leaves, that falls under the DPW department.
So should expenses under Cemetery now with 491, or is it Cemetery Maintenance, should that be under?
Which, yeah, pardon me. Which, which pager are you looking at, please?
Page 24.
Oh, 24.
491, number 27.
Number 491.
Mr. Moderator, I think you see the microphone, please.
Well, I was hoping it wasn't going to be this long, but it, it, um...
Do you want me to run the microphone?
Please, because I don't know what the issue is. I'm sorry. Okay. 491 is the one that's later on.
Yes.
491.
Got it. Okay. I, I think I now understand what the question is. But, go ahead, please.
Alan Arnold.
Yeah. Everyone else quiet, please? So, go ahead.
The question, number 294, I understand that Cemetery Maintenance.
Yeah.
Under 491.
Yeah.
You also have money for maintenance, I think. It says expenses Cemetery Maintenance. If the DPW is the one doing the lawns, the maintenance, et cetera, why do we have separate funds?
Okay. Bingo. I understand your question now. So why are there two maintenances in two different departments?
So Layden? Again, thank you, Mr. Town Moderator. Joe Layden, Town Manager. Uh, so for Cemetery Maintenance, uh, there's other things that the cemetery does that are outside of, say, the purview that DPW does for mowing and maintaining the actual grounds. There's, um, buildings that then are on the grounds that they maintain. Uh, there's also software that then they end up purchasing to maintain. Uh, the records, record keeping for the cemetery. Uh, so if you see under 491, you have Cemetery salaries and then expenses. So there's other things that the Cemetery Commission needs for support that falls under that line item.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right. So therefore, for Department 294, DPW, Parks, Forestry, and Cemetery, is there a hold on that or not? No? Okay, great. Thank you. 300, Education. 421, DPW, that's not the Parks, Forests, et cetera. 422, Highway Construction Maintenance. 423, Snow Ice Removal. 433, Waste Removal. And 491, Cemetery, which is what the question was about, which is dealing with the administrative end of things, which does have maintenance involved with that. Very good. 510, Board of Health. 522, Health Service. 522, health service. 541, elder and social services, council on aging. 543, veterans. 610, library. 630, beach. 691, historical commission. 710, retirement of debt. 725, debt service, short-term interest. State assessments, 820. Retirement, 911. Unemployment compensation, 915. Payroll taxes, Medicaid. Liability insurance. Trust fund commission. 500, warrant articles. And you'll see as we get to the warrant articles, these things are, are going to be dealt with. Revolving fund, DPW. So we're taking care of, like, board of health, 510. Oh, the social ser- uh, these are?
Just get over 990.
Oh. I'm sorry. Oh, 990, transfers out, thank you very much. That was at the bottom of page 32, which is? Which is zero, okay. Oh, okay. So we're all done with the general fund, now we'll go with the warrant articles. Sorry about that. So, the rest of them are just warrant articles that we will be dealing with later on. They just happen to be listed in the exact same form as before, which is why I just blew right by them. So, okay, good. So, we've got to the end of the budget. If you look at page 33, up top, it says total general fund of 20, 27,831,289 dollars, is that right? That's the bottom number, okay? And there were no holds. Anything else that needs to be said before we do a final vote on this? Finance committee, everything okay? So, uh, since that's what it is, all those in favor of voting for the budget, finance, hold up a green card. Good, hold up a red card if they're opposed, shouldn't be, okay. Thank you very much. Before we move on, just want to say thank you to the finance committee, finance department for putting together a good, tight budget, okay? Um, as I've said in the past, though, even though we either have no holds or a few holds, it's important to go through this process as part of the checks and balances that we have at a town meeting, because you are the legislative body. You need to make sure you're comfortable with what it is that's in this book. So, thank you very much, everybody, for all your help on this. Okay. We have next, article, uh, let's see, five, six, seven and eight, we already did by the consent calendar. So we're jumping all the way up to article nine, folks. All right, somebody get the motion for article nine.
Mr. Moderator.
This one out.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of 160,613 dollars into the stabilization account.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second at FinCom recommendation?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action by the FinCom, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up your green cards. Opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carries unanimously. Article 10.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of 200,000 into the capital stabilization account.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second at FinCom recommendation?
Favorable action.
Favorable action by the FinCom. Any discussion? Seeing none, hold up your green card. Opposed, hold up the red card. Motion carries unanimously. The next, I believe, we have is article 13, road construction appropriation. Mr. Mattalian.
Steve Mattalian, 161 South Street. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 100,000 dollars and transfer from free cash to sum of 180,000 dollars, for a total of 280,000 dollars, to be used for the construction and/or improvement of town roads, to supplement those provided for under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, past general law of chapter 90 program, including all expenses incidental and related, or to take any other action relative to their duty.
Okay. Second?
Second.
FinCom?
Favorable action.
Favorable action by the FinCom, any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I don't, I don't think you need the other action there too, on the end of the article.
Oh, thank you very much. No problem? The, uh, it's just, uh, thank you. Good, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, red card. Motion carries unanimously. A little while ago, someone gave me a card that said article 14 pass over, is that correct?
Yes, there is no definite.
Okay. So, someone, so if one of you can make the motion to pass over?
Article 14, make a motion to pass over the article.
Second.
Second. FinCom recommendation, you okay with that?
Which is the myro.
Okay. Basically, if you don't remember, what a pass over means is that we're not going to take any action on that particular motion. This was for a snow deficit possibility. It's not there, they're going to pass over it, and that's that. Any further discussion here? Seeing none, hold up the green cards. Opposed, hold up the red card. Passes unanimously. Okay. Article, let's see, 15. Yep, we slightly transferred, go ahead, Mr. Mattalian.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of 75,300 dollars to fund deficits associated with waste removal, curbside services, 0100-433-5200-5296, and waste removal disposal, 0100-433-5200-5293.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second at FinCom recommendation?
Favorable, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable by the FinCom, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, red cards. Unanimous, thank you. Let's see, 16 is done, 17 is done. Let's see. Okay, next one we're dealing with is article 18, heritage parks sign funding.
Mr. Moderator, Ed Coors, 3515, Chairman Historical Commission.
Yeah.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of 5,000 dollars from the Community Preservation Act Historic Resources Account to the Upton Historical Commission to purchase and install new signed heritage property.
Second.
Moved in seconded to raise appropriate 5,000, um, my ask for two recommendations? FinCom recommendation?
Favorable, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, and CPC recommendation?
Paul Carey, uh, success from Dwyer for the CPC, we, uh, favorable action at 3,000 dollars, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action at 3,000, but not at 5,000.
Correct. I believe that was accepted.
Okay.
That is supported by the Historical Commission, that was a change we agreed to last month.
So, therefore, do you want your motion to be 5,000 or 3,000?
3,000 dollars, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so, therefore, um, well, I'll use a term I don't like using much, but I'll use it here, friendly amendment. The number says five, it's going to be three, correct?
That's correct.
Good, so 3,000, everyone's recommendation's okay with that? Any discussion? Seeing none, to, to do the 3,000, signify by hold up the green cards. Opposed, red cards. Thank you, unanimous. Okay.
I am aware, Mr. Moderator, the microphone is not on, it's difficult to hear in the back of the room.
Okay, thank you. I...
You just have to get closer to it.
Uh, why don't you get a little closer?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Hear him now? Great, thank you. Okay, so, article 20. Nope, did I skip 19, sorry.
19.
Thought I just did, oh, that was the heritage park. I'm sorry about that. Article 19. But, you know, it's funny, when you were reading 5,000, I'm looking at the 120,000, God, that's not a lot of money that you want for that. But now you're going to read the other numbers.
Now I'm going to read the other number. Article 19, again, Ed Phillips, Historical Commission. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of 120,000 dollars from the Community Preservation Act Historic Resources Account for the restoration of the exterior of the Grange Hall Center School Number One located at 26 School Street, a building that is listed on the Massachusetts Register of Historic Places, to include a new roof, siding, trim repairs, handicap accessible ramp repairs, exterior painting and general landscape improvements in an effort to stabilize the exterior of the building contingent upon the town to the board of selectmen securing necessary preservation easements and restrictions.
Second? Oh, I'm sorry.
And I would, I would add that the, uh, Grange has submitted an application to the Massachusetts Historical Commission for additional grant funding, uh, which is uncertain whether they will receive that or not.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Uh, FinCom recommendation first?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator. Just, there was, uh, considerable discussion about this with the FinCom and, uh, after the explanation, it was decided to support the article as Mr. Phillips presented.
Okay, thank you. CPC?
CPC favorable action.
Favorable action by, uh, CPC. If I could have, have the motion cards, please, for both 18 and 19. Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up your green cards. All those opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carries by a jury. Article 20, funds for historic preservation.
Ed Phillips, one more time.
Yep.
Historical Commission, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of 25,000 dollars for the Historic Commission to use as deemed reasonably necessary to preserve the historical infrastructure of Upton in accordance with all laws and ordinances.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second at FinCom recommendation?
Favorable, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action by the FinCom, my favorite card, please. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up a green card. Opposed, red cards. Motion carries unanimously. 21, Warren Brook Bridge Robertson Family.
I sell a special to 11 North Street. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of 120,000 dollars from the Community Preservation Act Open Space Account to be extent available or from the Community Preservation Act Undesignated Account to fund the design and construction of a trail bridge for public use across Warren Brook on the Robertson Family Conservation Area Trail Easement.
Okay, second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, uh, club card, please. Thank you. FinCom recommendation?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator. You will note that the, uh, document indicates that a FinCom recommendation would be forthcoming and the, we met with the group prior to this meeting and, uh, voted to support this as presented.
Thank you. CPC?
CPC favorable action.
Favorable action by CPC. Any discussion on the motion?
Can I transfer my question?
Please.
Steve Byrne, Victoria Drive, which account is coming from? Never seen anything where two accounts are on there. Questionable accounts.
Well, it says it's being transferred from the Community Preservation Act Open Space Account to the extent or, oh, I understand what you're saying. Oh, yes, thank you very much. There's two funds it's talking about. CPC, do you want to clarify that?
Sure. From, the CPC is trying to use that money in the designated historic account first to the extent that's available, the extent to the extent, uh, and if there aren't sufficient funds from the, uh, undesigned account. So we're trying to keep maximum amount in the undesigned account.
Okay, thank you. Good question, good answer. All right, anything else?
Dan Ziris, ten, four hour, uh, you just said historic account was going to be expended, or where the, or where the two funds coming from? What? Open space. It's open space.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, capital budget.
Okay, uh, seeing no more, capital budget, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, the capital budget did not provide a recommendation on this because it's private property and we had looked at big items from the state, so we did meet about it and talk about it, but we don't have a recommendation.
So there's no recommendation either way. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up your green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carries by a majority. Article 22, police station ramp replacement, chief.
Michael Bradley, 4th Street. Mr. Moderator, the town vote to transfer from free caps to sum of 50,000 dollars for repair and/or replacement of the concrete ramp at the police station, including all expenses incidental and related.
Okay. Second. Moved in second at FinCom recommendation?
Favorable, Mr. Moderator.
Favorite by the FinCom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of 25,000 dollars to retain the services of consultants, engineers or similar to provide professional emergency management peer review services that draft an Upton Railroad operations and expansion plan.
Okay, second? FinCom?
Favorable.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carries unanimously. 24, highway replacement, one-time truck. Yes.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of 125,000 dollars to be used for the purchase of a replacement dump truck for the highway division, including all costs incidental and related.
Second.
Move to second at FinCom?
Support the articles printed, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. Capital budget?
Favorable action.
Favorable action by the capital budget. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Ed Phillips, 15, is this the same, is this the same dump truck that we agreed to purchase last year?
Okay. Is this the same dump truck that we purchased last? Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dennis Westgate, River Public Works. No, this is not, this is a replacement for the highway. The one that we agreed last year was for, um, cemetery.
Okay. Anything else? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carries by majority. 25.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of 65,000 dollars to be used for the purchase of a replacement vehicle for the DPW direct, similar in size and capabilities as the current vehicle that meets the town's fuel efficiency policy, including all costs incidental and related.
Okay.
Second.
Second, FinCom recommendation?
Favorable, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable by the FinCom. Capital budget, do you have a recommendation on this?
Favorable.
Favorable action, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carries unanimously. 26. Mr. Moderator? Tracker, yep.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of 231,000 dollars to be used for the purchase of a new front-end loader, including all costs incidental and related.
Um, that's not what this is, 26. Is it, okay?
Yep. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of 150,000 dollars to be used for the purchase of a roadside mowing tractor for the highway division, including all costs incidental and related.
Second.
Second. FinCom recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Card, please. No problem.
No problem.
There's no card for that one?
No.
Oh, you just, okay, so, just patch it up for later so we can get it back? Okay, thank you. Capital budget?
Favorable action.
Favorable action by the capital budget committee. Okay, any discussion on that? 26. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, hold up your red cards. Passed by majority. 27.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of 12,000 dollars to be used for the purchase of a replacement mower for the Parks Cemetery Forestry Division, including all costs incidental and related.
Second. FinCom recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable action. Uh, capital budget, do you have anyone on this or not? Okay, just, I thought that was the reason, but just wanted to check anyway. It's okay. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carries unanimously, no, by a majority, sorry. Okay, 28. Wastewater sand filtration refurbishment. 28, go ahead.
I move that the town vote to transfer from wastewater enterprise retained earnings to sum of two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of refurbishing and sand filtration system, including equipment and media for the purpose of providing territorial treatment of the wastewater treatment facility, including all costs incidental and related.
Second.
Second. Moving in second, FinCon recommendation?
Favorable.
Okay, capital budget committee?
Favorable.
Okay, any discussion? Thank you, yep. Seeing none, all those in favor hold up your green cards. Your red cards. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, twenty-nine. Water tank refurbishment repairs. Mr. Battalion?
I move that the town vote to transfer from wastewater and retain earnings to sum of one hundred twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of refurbishing the vaults at the Pratt Hill Water Tank and replacing of the ladder on the Pearl Street Water Tank, including any costs incidental and related.
Second?
Second.
Second, FinCon recommendation?
Favorable.
Capital budget?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor hold up the green cards. Red cards. Motion carries unanimously. Article thirty.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars to be used for the purchase of a large format scanner plotter for the departments within Town Hall, including all costs incidental and related.
Second.
Moving in second, FinCon recommendation?
Favorable.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor hold up the green cards. Opposed red cards. Motion carries by majority. Okay, uh, we did thirty-one already. Thirty-two.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of forty thousand dollars to be used for a classification and compensation plan review and update, including all costs incidental and related.
Second?
Second.
Moving in second, FinCon recommendation?
Favorable.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor hold up the green cards. Opposed red cards. Motion carries unanimously. Oh, there was one effect? Thank you, thank you, majority. Thirty-three, right here. Good.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred eight dollars for monies received from the Commonwealth's Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Fund for the purposes as set forth in the law.
Okay, second?
Second.
Moving to second, a FinCon recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any discussion? Good. All those in favor, green cards. Opposed red cards. Motion carries unanimously. Thirty-four.
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Upton General Bylaws, Chapter one twenty-two, Section one twenty-two dash five, entitled Roaming at Large, as set forth in the law.
Okay, so, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I, I would like it if somebody could briefly explain what it means because it wasn't part of the big motion. I don't need a big discussion necessarily, but at least a little bit of a discussion on what this does.
Mr. Moderator, animal patrol officer is going to go first.
Great, thank you. You can be as brief as you feel you need to be. I, I guess that's polite, I suppose. Go ahead.
So Mike Moran, one oh two High Street, Upton, and animal patrol officer of the Town of Upton. Um, we changed this in two thousand sixteen. The wording was changed a little bit wrong. The problem is we're having people saying the dogs are our voice command and you get there, you make, who's going to say, who makes the determination that it's not a risk? People say they are and they blaze, they come, dog don't come back. And you get, people get bit, chase them. The leash law, it used to be leash law, hunting dogs, hunting only, on it, like we have.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, good. Any more discussion? Okay. Sir?
Hi, sorry, uh, just a quick, quick clarification on this.
Name, please?
Oh, yes, of course. Jamie Jankola, uh, fifty-five Milford Street.
Great, thank you. Good.
Uh, so, does this now mean that we're including hunting dogs into the law or is this just a clarification on, uh, this article to, to explain the difference between leashing and hunting dogs?
Good question. Why don't you, why don't you stay after, why don't you stay after answering the question in case other questions? Good question.
So the question is on the hunting dog. Hunting is done only certain times of the year, dog can be off-leash. But if the dog's on your own property, it can be off-leash, long as it's not in the public way or somebody else's property. Like if you own eighty acres or in free, or if somebody commissioned her, the dog off-leash, that's game two.
Okay.
It's fair, it's all fair. It's just to control what's going on, it's epidemic, it's just getting out of control. I'd probably do ten a week. Yeah, that's not common with state forests that is another problem that we're trying to deal with.
Okay. Great, good. Anything else? Okay, good. So, um, Act thirty-four, tweaks to the leash law. No more questions, all those in favor hold up the green card. Opposed red card. Motion carries by majority. Thirty-five. ZPA membership, go ahead.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Upton zoning bylaws, Section three hundred dash nine point two A, by increasing the number of members on the zoning board of appeals from three members to five, as set forth in the planning board's report and as reproduced below, with new language underlined and deleted language being stricken as follows. I'm going to read that.
You don't need to read the whole thing. I, I think what's important is, uh, you know, maybe briefly, after we go through this stuff. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so just briefly explain quickly the reason why it's going from three to five.
This, this was, uh, put forth by the ZPA and they felt that with only three members, they were having trouble, uh, doing the job correctly and, uh, with, with five members, they would have a better chance of getting the appropriate votes and having enough members, uh, to, to act on matters before them.
Okay, great. Okay, good. Any other discussion on it? And I'm assuming all this stuff deals with just going from three to five?
That's correct and that looks, that looks correct.
Okay, good, because I don't want to find out a year or two from now. Oh, by the way, it's whatever.
It is three to five and, and the staggering of the, of the appointments.
Okay, great. Now, this does require a two-thirds majority vote because it is a zoning bylaw change.
Planning board favorable action.
And, planning board favorable, thank you, yep, good. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor hold up the green cards. Opposed red cards. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thirty-six.
Lynda G, ninth Dollar Street. I'm not sure the language, I'm sorry to get here before the meeting, but I'm going to pull up the article or?
Good, so the motion will be, I move to pass over the article, is what you'll say.
Thank you.
Yep.
I move to pass over the article.
Second.
Second. Moving in second to pass over the article, any discussion for why it's being passed over? If not, that's fine, you don't have to say anything unless you want to. It's up to you.
You know, I think people, now who've been in touch with me through email or the rolling pages, Facebook, so.
Okay.
Yeah. With regret. Thank you.
Understand, okay. Uh, yes?
Oh, shoot, sorry. One second.
Yeah, no, that's okay. That, that's it. So in other words, you, you're, you're passing over, hey, just to be sure, we're passing over thirty-six, that's what the motion is, to pass over thirty-six, which is the Norton Restine Building question. Okay, that's the motion that's being made. So, this is, this is the article. We are passing this over, which means we're not going to take action on it. Okay? So that's what the motion is, to not take any action at all. Everyone clear on that? Okay, good. So, all those in favor of passing over the article, hold up the green cards. Great. All those opposed, hold up the red cards. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Article thirty-seven. This is petition regarding, um, by, gee, so, uh, why don't you go ahead and make the motion, please?
I move that the town vote to amend under the Town of Upton zoning bylaws, Article six, special regulation, chapter three hundred dash six point two, twenty-two E, four, under this article of the twenty twenty-three Town Meeting, and I should say, wireless data transfer facilities to adopt the wireless telecommunications facility application requirement for completeness. Wireless transfer facilities applications will be considered incomplete until the FCC completes the DC surface for mandated environmental review of the entire wireless transfer facilities rollout pursuant to the National Environmental Policy Act of nineteen sixty-nine, including studies from scientists independent from industry who have fully investigated millimeter wave five G small cell technology safety, and that the FCC regulations have been updated to include measures that comply with the results of this review, and that the Town of Upton shall consider reasonable alternatives such as fiber optic. The following is, um, a footnote which we would like to ask of the moderator to be included in the public record. This reads, waivers may be granted for areas in Upton where there is documentable gap in service as evidenced by driving tests and road calls. Each applicant must ensure all required FCC reviews are complete before town approval can be given.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, so, before we have open discussion on this, this is the process of how we're going to deal with this. There are certain committees that want to make recommendations, I will allow them to make their recommendations one way or the other, and then, if there's any comment from the Board of Selectment at all from a legal point of view, they have the opportunity, if not, that's fine. And after that, there will be a presentation made by the sponsors of this, um, article, which has been made as a motion. It's my understanding that after that, there will be a presentation made by a group who wants to give an alternative point of view. After that, we will then open it up to discussion. So if you think you're going to need to ask a question, get near the microphone, but it's going to be a little while before you get to the microphone, and that's okay. So, first off, planning board.
Planning board, unfavorable action by a majority vote.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this was from the Technology Committee, I believe, they wanted to make a recommendation.
Steve Rocketton, twenty-one, Whitney Lane, Whitney Lane, the Chair of the Technology Committee, the Technology Committee, unfavorable action.
Okay, thank you. Now, if I understood, this is going to be a presentation to be made by the sponsor of the motion, are they ready for their presentation? And just so folks know, there is a time limit on presentations, it's twenty minutes, but they said it's going to be probably less than that, but just so that you're aware, that is what that, so. Ms. Woden, what? You can take the microphone away, yeah, that's fine. Good. You all set?
Hi, everybody. Lori Woden, seven Nelson Street, Upton, Mass. We're here today because, um, the FCC, who is supposed to be regulating emissions for radiation from cell devices, has not updated their standards since nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-six, when they originally made them for cell phones that went against your head. And so because of that, they have been sued and lost the lawsuit twice. The first time they said, okay, we're going to update the recommendations, we're going to keep the old ones, and that's what they did in two thousand nineteen, and then they were sued again, and they lost again, and this time they must do them, they must update them considering all the independent science and the eleven thousand pages of testimony that's been given. Um, we're waiting for that, they've still not done anything, another lawsuit is going to be pending to make them do what they're supposed to do. But the thinking is that if they're not taking care of our health, we as a community have a right to try and do that for ourselves. There is a lot of opportunity for us to legislate this, for our town boards to have say in what goes forward, and so I want to explain a little bit about that to you. So first of all, there's quite a bit of technology, um, vocabulary that we need to know. We're going to be talking about electromagnetic fields, we're going to be talking about radio frequency radiation, that is what comes off of cell towers. The Federal Communications Commission, the World Health Organization, and the IARC, which is the cancer branch of the World Health Organization, which has been asking the WHO to update their standards. What happens is, for a long time, we had four G, and that's how we got our internet, and that's how we're going to continue to get our internet. Five G is not going to bring us internet, it's just broadband, it's just going to bring us streaming, faster downloads, better gaming, and some cell driving cars. It's not for internet, that will always be four G. And so, what, um, the cell tower on Pratt Hill, far away, had a long, slow wave that by the time it got to us, it was more diffuse, and even though it does have biological impact, it's not so extreme. Five G, a very small, very weak millimeter waves that sometimes can't even go through rain or leaves or fog, and so in emergencies, they break down right away and they're not very useful to us. And because they're so weak, they require a dense infrastructure. So the telecom companies are telling us that they need to go on every two or three telephone poles, which puts them right outside our homes. And if a company like Verizon has an application and they are allowed to put the antenna on there, we have to allow every other company to put an antenna on there too. So if it's right outside your home, there could be four, five, six antennas radiating right where you live. And if you have small children whose brains are ten times thinner than ours, if it's a pregnant person, if it's an older person, immunocompromised person, and really anybody, there's, there's a huge biological impact. We have six years of studies, well, actually, we have forty years of studies. This is a microwave building that you've heard of since World War Two. But we now, a docket was opened, it was ignored by the FCC, it was finally closed down in frustration because they wouldn't do anything about all the science that was collected. There's two kinds of radiation. Ionizing radiation is thermal radiation, and that's what they were talking about with cell phones when they made their first determination in nineteen ninety-six. They took a cell phone, actually, they put it against the dummy head of a six-foot-two military man, and they said, this is the level that you will be able to be safe under. We have now since found out that that's not true at all. But cell towers have a different kind of radiation, and that's constant and that's twenty-four seven, and it's pulsing now for five G especially. And so it pulses many, many times a millisecond, and that is what's coming into our bodies. The FCC standards, okay, yep. When they made these standards, we were using floppy disks. Nobody here had a cell phone, and that's the standards that we're still using today. So Sandy, do you want to move that? Keep going. Okay. Then, this explains a little bit about when they were forced to open a docket, they collected information from two thousand twelve to two thousand eighteen, they got so much science that is very available to anybody to see on the internet, they got eleven thousand pages of research and public testimony of harm in twenty-seven volumes, and then the docket was closed with nothing done. So they were sued, as I said, they lost the suit, they did nothing, they were sued again, they lost the suit, and forced now to update their standards, and they just don't do anything. So we are left being radiated. The health implications, they said to them, what the DC court said to them is, you must look at the health implications of long-term wireless exposure, not the short term with your cell phone, but what's happening to us all day, every day right now as we stand here. You must look at the impacts on children, you must look at the testimonies of the people who have been injured during that docket, and they also want them to open a new docket from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three. They want them to look at the impacts on the developing brain of children, they want them to look at the impacts on the reproductive system, and we know what's happened with sperm count is less than half of what it used to be when they started, and also for women who use laptops on their, on their, on their little area, reproductive area. They are also saying to them, you must assess impact to wildlife and the environment. In the original law, they were supposed to do a NEVA review, a National Environmental Review, they never even did that. What happened was, they were studying this, and when nineteen ninety-six came and they were ready to put out really good standards, funding got cut. And so that's why we were left with the standards of the six-foot-two And so that's why we were left with the standards of the six-foot-two, pretend dummy male, and that's what we're using today. The big picture is, there hasn't been any research. So the WHO, in two thousand eleven, World Health Organization, they categorized radio frequency AMFs as a possible carcinogen, which is the same as lead and DTT, DDT, chloroform, and methylmercury, and others that you'd be horrified to know. Since two thousand twenty, well, this, if any of you got the time, you're going to see that they've been asked by practically everybody to update their standards, and they haven't done anything about it. The IARC, their cancer branch, has asked them officially since two thousand twenty to please look at this again. And they, the people who are on the original committee and subsequent people now, think it's going to be determined to be a probable carcinogenic or possibly a definite carcinogenic. There's so much science that we all, we know this. Unfortunately, the W, they were, they said you have to do it by two thousand twenty-four, and the WHO has put it off until that time. And we are the guinea pigs. We are the lab rats that are being affected by this while they take their time to update their standards. Senator Blumenthal in Congress, who's on the Telecommunications and Energy Committee, brought in the heads of, um, telecom companies, and said to them, what are you doing about research? And they had to admit that they are not doing research. They have no money assigned to study this at all. So the government's not studying it. They did do one study in two thousand eighteen, um, that we're going to see about in a minute. But what Senator Blumenthal finally had to walk away and say was, it seems like we're flying blind here. You're not studying it. Government's not studying it. People are being affected, and there is nothing that we can do about it. And so, that's why we are hoping, as a town, the law gives us a lot of rights that we have on our side to work with our, um, our bylaws, to make setbacks, things like that. But in the meantime, we want to put a pause on this so that we can do the work that needs to be done to keep ourselves safe. The American Academy of Pa-, um, Academy of Pediatrics sent a letter to the U.S. FDA and the FCC, and this is what they said. Children are not little adults. They are disproportionately impacted by all this radiation. Current FCC standards do not account for the unique vulnerability to pregnant women and children. It is essential that any new standards for cell phones or other wireless devices be based on protecting the youngest and most vulnerable populations to ensure that they are safeguarded through our lifetimes. Putting antennas on telephone poles, utility poles, light poles on our roads, as is probably going to happen with one forty when they do the redo, is not what they're talking about. That is not what they feel should happen. And I hope it's not what you should feel should happen either. The big companies around the world, Lloyd's, Alungens, Swiss Re, will not insure against harm. What they have said is, we cannot put anything to insure against harm because we would be paying out so much money for harm that's easily proven. And that is a huge problem. Even Verizon and all the telecom companies say they have to put huge amounts of money aside because they're being sued all the time. We think about them suing us, but they're being sued all the time, and they're losing their lawsuits a lot. New Hampshire decided to really study this. They did a full year-long in-depth study. So if we want to look at anybody who was wondering about the dangers, they had doctors, scientists, electromagnetic professors. They had every kind of person, epidemiologists, immunologists, and they had people from telecom. And they came together and studied for an entire year all the science. They took all the testimony, everything. And after that year, many people who thought it was going to be not a big deal discovered that it was a very big deal, and they have put a hold on five G in New Hampshire. They have decided, they have fifteen recommendations, and they're taking them one by one to enact them. This was signed by the legislator, signed by Governor Sununu. And this, I mean, if we're looking for someone to study it, they have done the study. They have said that schools and libraries should be migrated to wired connections within five years. Kids are on these devices all day long, all around them in the classroom. This, this is terrible. They say that signal strength measurements need to be collected. You know, we roll out these things, and then we don't collect the data to find out if they're functioning correctly or they are hazardous to us. In, um, special warnings about the effects on newborns and young children have to be there. Setbacks for residences need to be determined through the permitting process. They strongly encourage fiber optic, as does our Technology Committee and do any, does anybody who knows about what's a better connection. And they want to establish a database of people harmed. We're trying to do that in Massachusetts as well. This is a very important chart. If you look at the left, and if you look at the blue line, that is the incidence of cancer in the general population. By a base station, a hundred feet, a hundred meters from a base station, three hundred feet, is that high red square. That's how much the rates of cancer go up. A hundred meters, a hundred meters from a base station, that's three hundred feet. And now they want to put it twenty-five feet away from our homes outside our doors. It isn't until five hundred meters that it begins to be a little bit safer. And it's really not until a thousand meters or three thousand feet that it is coming to be close to where it is in the general population. That's what some towns are doing. They're saying from schools, three thousand feet, and they're saying from residents, fifteen hundred feet. We can get five G in this town. You know, we have parts of, we want to make that amendment. We want to add that note that we added in our motion. We want to, um, make it so that we have good coverage all over town. But five G along one forty is going to get coverage on North Street or on East Street or on Sidewell Drive. What we really need is a little pole right there in those areas, or a few of them, and we can get that. But we can't get it if we just do what the telecom companies tell us they want to do because it's easy and because it's inexpensive for them to put it on poles that are already there. We want to do what's best for us. We want to study it, make sure that we understand that there are safe ways to do this, and I'm hoping that we can agree as a community to take this pause and do that work and make sure that we get the coverage that we need and the areas that we need in a safe way. So Upton's dilemma is that the current bylaw allows telecommunications companies to install towers within a distance in homes and schools that has been documented thoroughly as hazardous to the health of humans, animals, and the environment. Freedom of choice is a fundamental value. The FCC and the telecom industry should not force Americans to endure involuntary exposure to powerful RF radiation in their own home, school, and businesses. It's kind of like secondhand smoke, you know, we realized too late, or fossil fuels. We realized too late that we have been buying what they're selling us, and I think we're doing it again. So I think we want to think about what's best for us and not what's best for them. This is not about getting rid of cell phones or wireless. It's actually about getting better connections. There's no person in this field that will tell you a wireless connection is better than a wired connection. We've had a better connection for ten years, but they don't make money on what we already have. So they monetize this very little part of the spectrum that was left, but it's these weak waves, as I've explained to you. And we want to make sure that we get a better connection. So we want fiber. We can get it through cable. There are things that we can do that are safe, and there are things that we shouldn't do. Uh, this week, in Sheffield and Great Barrington, they just passed this very same, um, bylaw. Passed the same motion into a bylaw that we're trying to do. They just passed it. They have sent it to the Attorney General already in advance. The Attorney General's office made some changes, and so what we have is based on what they have and already had the chapes incorporated. Since they have passed their motion on Monday night, it's gone back to them. There's been conversations, and it seems like it's going to be okay. Um, so we're asking you to vote yes on the warrant that the town pause application for five G installations until the FCC does what the law has told them to do. No, too many corporations and people are above the law in this country, and we aren't, but we get affected by it. We want them to respond to the mandated court order review about the substantial scientific evidence submitted to them regarding harm and prove that this technology is safe. I think we deserve that. Thanks, Green. If you vote against it, we issue permits for five G transmitters prior to the FCC determination. The town may be liable for lawsuits from residents who are harmed, and we, of course, don't want that to happen. If you vote against it, a telecom company wants to put a cell tower near your home or your school, and our laws are what they are today, a court won't hear our case. We only stand a chance at the courts if our bylaw is amended soon to increase safe setback limits. And I think, you know, I have talked with the Technology Committee over the years, and I know that they wrote a letter to the state asking for five or two. We know what we want, and I think we just have to work hard to get it. And if we can put a pause on this, we'll have time to do that, work on our bylaw, get setbacks in there, and give us, and give ourselves something that is safe. So please vote yes. There are legal rulings that give us the right to do this. The next screen will tell you that the Telecom Act says in the actual text, preservation of local zoning authority. They are preserving local authority. That's us. We're getting preserved. General authority except as provided in this paragraph. Nothing in this chapter shall limit or affect the authority of the state or local government or instrumentality thereof over decisions regarding the placement, construction, and modification of wireless service. I know people are concerned about lawsuits, but this is one protection. The next screen tells us, this is about the court case in, that we've told you about. What has happened is because all this documentation and testimony has been entered into the public record, it now counts as substantial evidence. And so, if we, if we were sued, we can show that there's substantial evidence because it's in the court record. It's been entered into the FCC's record. It's been accepted by the U.S. Court of Appeals, D.C. Circuit, and has been ruled upon, and all circuits are bound by that ruling. And the last slide that we have will tell you that what happened at the beginning was the courts were going to make a national policy. And then it was decided by Congress not to do that. They ultimately rejected the national approach and substituted a system based on cooperative federalism, which left state and local authorities remaining free to make citing decisions. I can show you ten pages of cities and towns and places across the country in the world where they are banning this and have bought it successfully. It's happening more and more every day. There's been a couple court cases that are even based on health lately. They are realizing that these standards are so old and outdated that they can't rely on them. There's even some talk about throwing them out and starting over. But in the meantime, we don't want to be the guinea pigs. We want to be the people who educate ourselves and move forward together to have better connection that's safer. Thank you.
David Brooks, three family circle and a member of the Technology Committee. Um, I'm going to start by talking on behalf of the committee, um, a statement that we agreed at our most recent meeting. Um, I've only just seen this. I've been, well, I'll explain why I'm going to talk to this in a moment. Um, a couple of years ago, I was asked by the committee to research this whole topic of small cell installation within the town, both the legal and the, um, regulatory environment and the technical environment. And I've done a very deep dive over that time into both regulatory approaches by cities and towns across the country, and especially in Massachusetts. I've studied relevant law, federal and state regulations, and I sent a report on this recently to various town committees. I've worked closely with both town planners, including Michael Incanis. Now, regulations have submitted a draft bylaw to regulate small wireless facilities. Um, hopefully, we'll have it entered in the air. But I want to set the record straight a little bit. Uh, the Tech Committee wants to keep its deliberations focused on the technologies itself and will leave health, um, decisions to the Board of Health, although I'm quite happy, happy to consult with them at all. So there are some potential concerns that may be on your mind, um, which I don't think are being clarified. When you hear the word radiation, first of all, that means two totally different things. And this is, I'm surprised the English language doesn't have two terms. This has nothing to do with the radiation from the radon in a basement, from nuclear fallout. That's, um, radioactivity radiation. It has nothing to do with the EMF, so don't worry about that word. The reason I say that is that the twenty-twenty-one court, D.C. Court, found it necessary to make that distinction as well in their decision, you know, felt that that was a reason. The other is, um, despite what it says in this slide here, um, it...
Did I lose this?
Did I? Electromagnetic radiation, they're talking about this, um, to clarify, an entire spectrum of the same physical phenomenon ranging from wavelengths of radio, including the radio, it's picked up at radio telescopes, which is a very slow frequency and a very long wavelength. Frequency and wavelength things interchangeably. Through radio, it's limited with AM, FM, UHF. Through microwaves, which is the region in which we communicate, on to infrared, visible light, ultraviolet X-rays, and gamma rays. These are all the same thing physically, but with different frequencies and wavelengths. Ionizing radiation, which is dangerous and can block electrons out of our orbit and change the chemistry of your body, appears with very high ultraviolet, um, X-rays and gamma rays. Um, we are keeping you away from those, and that you don't have an X-ray. And I, I think I'm going to need to introduce some numbers here. There's a convenient measurement unit used for measuring microwaves called a gigahertz, which is when these waves pass you a thousand billion times a second. So the microwaves we're talking about range from about half a gigahertz to, the definition scientifically is three hundred, but in the communication they're having right now is between around half a gigahertz to five. I'll talk about millimeter waves soon. Just to, just to get an elbow in magnitude, we will never see five G up about, up of about sixty. Visible light starts at four thousand four hundred. Ionizing radiation, harmful stuff, starts at about two point two million. So don't worry about ionizing radiation. The idea that heating is ionizing radiation is, is just not true. We've been using radio for decades and light since we crawled out from the ocean. Um, being impinging on that radiation itself, I think we all agree, is not harmful. Um, what matters are the frequencies and the intensities. Now, um, existing radio towers are always radiating all directions. Towards the low end of the microwave frequency, two G, three G, and four G occupy a very narrow brand between them. And they impinge on all of us all the time. So does the Wi-Fi in the roof. There are four Wi-Fi, um, receivers radiating you all right now, but you're not being harmed by them. In fact, if, I've got a term that, well, I don't need to tell you the word. If one of my kids were to call and I want to speak to them, my signal's pretty weak. The most radiation I will get will be from this, and it will also be the most radiation you will get. So this radiation is omnidirectional, and there is a feature of five G that is intended to address that. Five G is a term for a whole umbrella set of technologies. There's a huge misperception out there that five G means millimeter waves. These are the high-frequency wavelengths between thirty and three hundred, but in practical terms, we say between about twenty-eight and sixty for the use of microcommunications. Uh, five G is not millimeter wave. It is one small component. There's a whole collection of different coding techniques to go into the radio waves, of different ways of transmitting the data, of directing the data directly to, um, your, your devices. I will say cellphone. And, um, it's, um, just, just millimeter wave is millimeter waves, which, again, we described briefly, are a component and not a necessary component for five G. Now, the whole point of the two G, three G, four G, and five G is to address mobile operations. Not just, as in the old days, cell phones and texts, but also your computers, your smartwatch, your, um, their ambulance is now being equipped with five G virtual reality, so doctors can operate, can see what's going on in patients if the ambulance is in motion. Um, hazardous ways to clean up. You can control, remotely control a machine using five G. I think drones will soon have five G over remote control. The, the essence of it is, is mobile. And since we, um, talked about fiber, fiber is just a drop-in replacement for the cable we get in the spectrum. It's a wire. It happens to have glass fibers in it. It can carry a lot more data at the same time without so much congestion, but it has to be connected at both ends. It's great for connecting buildings and data centers, but you can't attach a fiber to your vehicle, to your phone, to your smartwatch, to your drone, and have it drag along the ground. Fiber is just a faster cable, and hopefully, we can break clear of the spectrum monopoly. Now, um, the, just, just to give you an idea of what it would mean, though, um, the Technology Committee recently received a $250,000 grant from the state to wire up six town buildings. There are three thousand buildings in the town, and nobody's going to give us fiber. There are 3,000 buildings in the town, and nobody's going to give us fiber. So the cost, you can do the math yourself. If you want fiber, the right place to go is to the federal and state legislators and say, you've been talking about rural work, but where is it? Send us the, give us the fiber, give us the grants, break the monopoly. That's the place to go for fiber. But fiber is not the solution for mobile communications. So you have to remember that the pandemic taught us the importance of having remote access, of having mobile access. People are now working more at home and in the field. Mobile telecommunications is vital. The current systems of 4G are breaking at the seams. We need a better system. And some aspects of 5G that you have heard about, it's better bandwidth, its potential use of higher technologies are true, but in a place like Upton, it's very unlikely we'll see the high-frequency waves soon. We just don't have the demand. Current is being implemented in some European and American cities with very dense populations. Imagine you're at Fenway Park, and you're trying to upload to Facebook. So is everyone in the 33,000 people. You know how long it takes, but no doubt you're what it's taking that time because everything is so slow. Your phone is going slow, your phone is getting hot because it's got up to the maximum power, but your cell phones will dial down. Everyone in this room communicating with a Democratic cell tower will have their phones pretty quiet, but if you get a call, it'll bump up the energy a little. If you're in Fenway Park, it'll be running very hot. Most of the radiation we get in practice comes from our phones. So because of the value of improved telecommunications, that's why the, and the fact that fiber is a not appropriate remote for mobile, and not coming soon, it's just a pure financial fact, that is why the Technology Committee wants to move ahead and not put barriers in the way of providing us with these decent communications. Now, I've just seen this, and I want to correct a few misconceptions that are here. The, it is not true the FCC has been silent. There are international studies, the international bodies, and the WHO gathers all this information. It has been doing research on health and microwaves since the last 45 to 50 years. Millimeter waves in particular have been studied since 1950. The health effects are summed up as if you absorb radio energy in your skin or deep in your body, it will warm up. That is the only way that energy at this frequency can affect you. And remember I said that millimeter waves have a shorter wavelength? Well, the depth of penetration is about, is about half of the wavelength. So if we're talking about 30 gigahertz, that is, I think, 10 millimeters or 1.4 inch in the wavelength. It's not going to absorb very far into your skin, and it's easily radiated out. Now, there are different standards available for longer wavelengths, which can go deeper into the body, or into the body as a small lab animals. But international consensus, this has been reinforced, and I can provide some citations for this, is that there is a minimum amount of radiation that will have biological effects on the human body. There are effects other than heating, but those are minor compared with heating. You've taken that level and divided it by 50. 2% of the maximum, of the minimum amount that will be biologically active is the top limit, which is very strictly enforced by not only the FCC, but all their sister bodies across Europe and the developed world, all use the same standard. The standards were revised in 2020 by an international body, and largely brought in line with what the FCC already has. So there was no need for the FCC to update their guidelines, and in fact, the Ninth District Court in 2020 accepted that and said the FCC had met their needs, arguing that the D.C. District Court is going to go into the Supreme Court, but it's by no means a done deal. It's landmarked. So as I said, 5G is not just millimeter wave. We can use the same techniques with small cells, using existing wavelengths, wide meaning small cells. If you're communicating with a thing on Pratt Hill, you can get breakdowns in communications, your cellphone can have to work harder to try to talk to it. If there is a cell that's smaller than the things we see everywhere from the cable repeaters with three lights on them, you won't have three lights, then your cellphone has to work less hard or put out less energy. That is what we like about it. So I'm, moving on. The standards, as I said, international standards were updated in 2020, not 1996 ones. The 2021 FCC regulation certainly asked the FCC, the District Court, D.C. Court certainly asked the FCC to go back and justify its position, but did not change its position, simply to put up the evidence for what it was, for the new rules. And again, the evidence is the same as in many nations. Just last year, there have been reports from the Nordic nations, Sweden separately, New Zealand, Britain, to say we are satisfied, the current regulations are okay for health, and they are pretty good in the environment. This is slide eight. The IARC asked for funding and made a new decision, and apparently, according to some unnamed individuals, they will likely declare radio waves a definite carcinogen. Well, if that happens, it didn't happen. If that happened, you'd say goodbye to your cellphone and your Wi-Fi repeater and your cord is thrown in the home because they will just be, they'll just have to be taken away. I've found online the source, what I think of the source for this, there is an anti-technology group that took an AI blog, trained it on some dubious animal studies, and it wrote a report to say, yes, in 2024, the WHO will declare definitely carcinogenic. We've been hearing a lot recently about the dangers of this information coming from AI, and I believe that may well be the source for this claim. I've heard it recently. The New Hampshire report made some recommendations and was severely criticized by a minority report, which is pointing out the extreme bias that was chosen, that existed in the commission. I recommend you read the full report and the minority report. The actual recommendations are less than meets the eye. They did not declare any specific health danger caused by RF radiation, and some of their recommendations frankly assert. Now, there's a picture of an antenna outside someone's window. Yeah, we don't want to see that, although if you look around above your head when you're driving, that ship has sailed. What we can do, what the planning board and the selectmen can do, is write regulations, if we're permitted to, that will say that no small cell can be emitted within some number of degrees view of someone's window because we have, we are allowed, and the courts have stressed this, to make aesthetic considerations. We are allowed to make considerations as part of safety, both physical and electrical. We're allowed to demand radiation measurements. And this attempt to stop us from writing regulations will actually make us more vulnerable because, quite frankly, federal law says that you may not write regulations that take into account environmental issues. I can give you the citation, it's the next chapter, I'll put the one in this slide. And also may not have regulations, but have the effect of prohibiting small cells. But again, there's less need to worry with modern 5G technologies because one thing we can do, even with the old wavelengths, one thing that telecom companies can do, led by Ericsson, who provides most of the equipment, is to beam the beams directly to the phone or mobile device or smartphone or smart watch that is talking to it with a much smaller amount of energy because it's just over there. So your device can really have a trickle of energy. It can have a trickle of energy. There's a beam straight from it to me, not to you, not to you. And furthermore, when small cells are communicating with each other, they beam directly to each other. This was a study done by the town of Watertown by an accredited bioelectronic engineer. And I shouldn't have made a slide deck. I spoke with a moderator before the meeting, he said, yeah, you shouldn't have made a slide deck. But this is showing an estimate of the specific antenna that's now being erected in Watertown, and the amount of energy that it puts out. You notice most of it is sideways, not down to the ground. There are red contours, orange contours and green contours. Red contours are telling the people who work on the antenna to probably switch them off before they get up there. But the outside of the green contour is less than 1% of that 2% number. So you're really now at 1/5, 1% of, 1/5,000 of the maximum limit for biological exposure up a place you can't climb up to. So what I recommend is that we forge it. We recognize the international community has done a lot of work on safety, that we can regulate the placement of small cell antennas, which can be used with the 4G frequencies, the point series, the two, the threes that are already there. And the millimeter wave frequencies are only going to be used in large cities. And we should write regulations that correspond with federal law so we don't get sued. I think that's it. I think I have my ten minutes.
Okay, thank you both very much for your presentations. And we now open it up to questions. Any other general discussion that you have at this point? Ms. Walker?
Lord of Water, 7 Nelson Street. I do want to talk about the most recent and significant health studies that have been done. Our National Institute of Health did a $30 million study, the biggest one that's been done by International Toxicology Program. It was, and what it determined was clear evidence of the link between RF radiation and carcinogenicity. Anyway, they found clear evidence of tumors around the heart and brain. Then, in Italy, the Ronazzini Institute found that lab animals exposed to RF radiation made by distant cell towers had a greater chance of developing heart tumors than once that were not exposed. This study was partially by our government as well, and it was the first large-scale study to show clear evidence of cancer risk from the RF field. So that's something that we have now had several studies. Yale researchers found that pregnant laboratory mice exposed to cellphone radiation produce offspring that were more hyperactive and have poorer memories. There was an article in PubMed, the effect of RF radiation on sperm counts and that sort of thing, reproductive studies. These are, this is very serious, everybody. I want, you know, if they're suggesting that we get a better signal when the cell tower is closer to us, I think that's something we want to be paying close attention to. We could have it in our bedroom, we'd get a great signal, but is that what we want? Is that what we think is healthy for us? So I think it's a very, very important situation that you want to think about.
Thank you.
I want to address specifically the NTP and Ronazzini.
Sure, and then after that, we'll have other folks make comments, please.
But one answer to that is, can buy a cell to put in a vigger? Ericsson makes them as well. And as I said, they require less power, but I want to specifically address those two studies. The NTP study was actually commissioned in 1999. It was a very well-conducted study, took about 10 years, and in it, mice and rats were put in a box, big one, and submitted to RF radiation at 2G and 3G frequencies using all modulations from all of their lives for 1,24 hours a day in the stages. So the radiation is very close to their bodies. They have small bodies, so the wavelengths go right through them and affect their internal tissues as well. And the intensities were, there are several ways of measuring the intensity, but one of the most commonly used was 19 times that biological limit that I talked about, 19 times, sorry, the regulatory limit. So they were subjected to a lot more stress than any human could ever be. And if you want a detailed analysis of it, I can forward you, ask you, I can forward you a paper by Luca Calavera at University of Rome, who has done a long paper on all the bylaws that is the latest, particularly examining the NTP and Ronazzini studies. The point is, the male and female mice showed no damage.
Second, folks in the back, you need to stop talking.
I'll be quick.
No, it's not you. It's the folks in the back. If I can hear you in the back, then everyone else can hear you. The speaker is speaking, so please be quiet. Thank you. Go ahead.
The male and female mice showed no statistically significant damage. The female rats also, the male mice had these heart pre-cancers, which were, by some people who observed the studies, completely explained by the internal heating because the waves went into their bodies and couldn't be radiated away. So there is some indication there of further evidence, there needs to be further information that needs to be followed up. Research is never finished, but the general scientific consensus is still not indicative of human harm, and if you don't believe me, read the conclusion by the authors of the study, who said, and I have the exact word on the file, which I can bring, that basically this is not applicable to human beings, it's an area we should study further.
Thank you. Okay.
Lisa Burnett, 228 Menden Street. Our family has lived here since 1950, and my grandchildren now live here. I am voting for this, and I'm voting for this because I like that it's putting a pause. It's not saying no, it's saying we need to investigate, and I do feel the health concerns are incredible. And one of the things that goes into my thinking about it is I respect my neighbors, I listen to my neighbors, and if Governor Sununu and the state of New Hampshire says, stop, we need to look at it more, I am listening to that. And the other thing I think about a lot is that we had a chance to put some parameters around the railroad in town, and we didn't. And now we have toxic chemicals that daily go through our town because of the railroad. So I would say, please, please put a pause, not a stop, and vote for this tonight. Thank you.
Mike Moran, 102 High Street. Just town council, the wording on it, and what's your opinion on it?
Okay, since this is a question for town council, is there any comment that you would like to make regarding wording, legality, et cetera?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, through you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Mazur. I'm an attorney with KP Law, we're town council in Upton. And at the time that the petition for Warren Article was presented to the town, my colleague, Robin Stein, who's a zoning attorney, looked at it and provided an opinion. First off, just with respect to the approval process generally, the AG, the Attorney General's Office, does not review and approve bylaws, either general or zoning, in advance. You know, there's a process by which bylaws are voted on by the legislative body of the town, that then submitted to the AG for review, and then the AG either approves or disapproves at some point down the line. We're not familiar with them providing advisory opinions or providing markups to bylaws in advance of them being voted on by a town. With respect to the language itself, there is a concern, and we've expressed the concern, that, you know, the AG could look at the bylaw as drafted as being an unlawful moratorium under both state and federal law. You know, as people probably know, the requirements of the Common Law of Zoning Act apply to any application for a special permit under Section 300-6.2 of the bylaw. The petition for bylaw language provides that WTF applications will be considered incomplete, quote unquote, until the FCC conducts its review. It's generally what it provides. Even if the AG approves the petition, it's our opinion that deeming applications incomplete and then not acting upon those because the FCC has not taken the actions listed could leave the town vulnerable to claims under both federal law and state law that the town did not timely act on the application for the wireless telecommunications services such that the town effectively prohibited those services, or that such applications have been constructively approved. If deemed constructively approved, the municipal permitting granting authority, in this case the planning board, would likely lose the opportunity to condition the project or to work with the applicant on changes that may make it more palatable. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for your opinion on that. So it's not indefinite, but there are some things that have to be dealt with from a, potentially from a legal point of view, but it's not definite yes or no.
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Catherine Robertson. I live at 59 Fowler.
I live at 59 Bowler Street. And I came up to ask a question, but before, I just want to make a statement. The science out there is not conclusive. I have had the privilege of being down the State House for the last three sessions where this has been discussed. I was there for another issue that was discussed at the same hearing. And the petitioners have asked, at least for the last three sessions, that the state does a study of the health impacts of small cell technology. And this legislature has not given the go-ahead to do that study yet. So, and when I'm at these hearings, there are a lot of, there's a lot of conflicting, quibbling scientists. You know, there's different opinions on where the science is and what the science is. So I just wanted to raise that issue because it seems that, you know, the presenters are talking about there's definitive science and it's not definitive science. But the question I came up to ask was, there was a note that flashed on the screen that I don't believe was in the warrant. I don't believe it was in the original motion. And I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about that because it said that a waiver, I think it said, and again, it just flashed on the screen, I haven't seen any other.
I can read that for you when you're done.
Thank you. Okay. But basically, I had a number of questions on it. You know, what is a waiver? Is that a variance? Is that a waiver? How, who is it requested of? What are, what is the, what is criteria? Who pays for the criteria? You know, is the, you know, it's just, there were so many questions, and I don't know why that wasn't in, you know, why that can be, you know, quite frankly, why that can be pounced on a motion made at a meeting when people haven't had a chance to consider it.
Okay, so this is what I will do. I will explain basically the process of how it is that the waiver got in there, and then, but then someone else will need to explain the point of the waiver. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay, so, at the moment, there is, this zoning bylaw does not address the specifics of this motion at the moment, so there's no law regarding it, okay? The motion as read, or as, excuse me, stated in the warrant would include the entire town. So you have a situation where you have nothing, and then the article itself said the whole town. What this waiver does is say that there were certain parts of town where this motion would not apply, where the rules of this wouldn't apply. So therefore, when the person asked me, "Can we put that into this article as a motion?" I said, "Yes," because right now we're starting with nothing. The article says the whole town. So if you want to make a statement saying that certain parts of town, there'll be a waiver, then that's okay. So that's why this waiver fits within what I call the four corners of the article. Okay? So I just want you to understand that.
Yeah.
So now the question is, what does the waiver mean and why is it in there? Someone else has to answer that question, okay? I can't answer that question for you. All I can answer is that the reason why I allowed the waiver to be part of the motion is because it fits within the four corners of the article.
So even though the motion is for the entire town, the emotion, the motion really isn't for the entire town. It's for the entire town where if a certain process is followed and it meets certain parameters, that it doesn't apply. So we've changed the definition of where this, this bylaw restriction will be. So we basically changed the definition.
Well, not exactly, because right now there's nothing, okay, on this. The article said the whole town. You follow me?
No, I do understand. I don't want to cripple the point, but I just, you know, I just don't understand, I don't understand what it means, I don't understand what the cost is, I don't understand.
Then somebody has to answer that question.
...be wrapped into it when it changes the total, in my mind, and it changes the total intent of the motion.
Fair enough. So this is what we're gonna do. Hopefully you all understand the reason why I allowed that extra statement, because it fits within the criteria of the article. It does. Now, someone needs to explain why the waiver's in there. Because, yeah, please, so that we can understand, so that way we can move on to the next question regarding this, okay? So there is a reason why they put the waiver in there, okay?
But it's, before Laurie starts to speak again, it's not just the reason, because I know what the reason is. I think that the big question is, what are the criteria? How does it, how is it determined? It was, I think it was talked about, it can be done, who is going to determine it? Is it zoning? Is it planning? Because if this is a zoning ordinance, it usually goes to the CBA, to the variance process, but I was told it was the planning board that was going to make these determinations. So I don't know if there's any definitive, making definitive work out here.
Well, I think someone can answer that for you, I hope so. Go ahead.
So Laurie Ward, 7 Nelson Street. We want to be reasonable. We wanted to put a pause on this, but we also recognize that there are parts of town where there's not good cell service, and that's an issue. It's an issue for safety, and it's an issue for convenience. It's an issue to show that we're not trying to put a moratorium, we're not trying to be hardcore, we're trying to be reasonable and do something that's best for the town. Waivers, what happens is, there are areas of town where there are drop calls. We all know where they are. The police chief, the fire chief, they all know where they are. There's things called drive tests that can be done. The applicants also do them. The only thing the FCC really guarantees is if there's a gap in service, then we need to be able to put something there for people. And so this would provide us knowledge about where there is a gap in service. And so it was recommended to me by a planning board member that this would be a good way to do it. We had it at one point in a different place, but it did make sense, it needs to get into the bylaw, and since that first paragraph is all that would go into the bylaw, it seems to make a lot of sense. I, I'm sorry we haven't thought about it ahead of time so that it wasn't in the original article, but I told everybody I could between then and now that we, that the intention was to do that because frankly, people have come up to me and said, "We need better cell service," and we recognize that that's very much the case. And so in an attempt to meet the needs of the people in this town, that's why we put it in.
Okay. So hopefully that's the answer. Well, okay.
Just to add, because this is important to me, because I serve on one of the town boards that may be in this.
Okay.
My question, who pays for it? What is the test? What is the criteria? Who's going to drive the cars around? What board hears it? What board makes those determinations? And I don't think it's been fully fleshed out yet. And when it's done in the 11th hour, it doesn't get fully fleshed out. And it's, it's just very frustrating to me.
Okay, are you talking just about a waiver or a whole thing?
I'm talking about the request, you know, how do you request, I mean, the waiver provision, the original proposal, the original warrant item has been around for a long time.
Okay.
And I think everyone's had a chance to look at it. This, the first thing I heard about was five o'clock tonight, when I looked at my email.
Okay, fair enough. But all I'm saying is that from a warning perspective as the moderator, my interpretation of this is that it does fit within the four corners of the article.
Let me ask one more question. Is the town going to have to pay for the drive test? Are the applicants going to have to pay for the drive test? Are the drive, who's going to evaluate what the drive tests say? Who is going to foot the bill for this? Who is going to make the decisions?
Okay.
I think the application hit. It's up to them to approve the gap in service, the applicants, which is the telecom companies that are applying.
And who is applying to?
They apply to our town, to anybody.
Okay, we can't have a discussion back and forth on this.
Shouldn't it be done at a board meeting?
Well, I, okay, I understand. Next.
Ed Briggs, 24 James Road, Chairman of the Board of Health. At our last meeting, we did review the information that was presented to us, but we determined that without further review from outside sources, that we would be neutral.
Okay, thank you.
Marcia Kaczewski, 10 Whitney Lane.
A little bit closer.
Marcia Kaczewski, 10 Whitney Lane. I'll stop by saying I've been a high tech woman, I, including development and support and communication.
Please speak up.
So I'm not, I'm not against technology, but I was concerned that when I was following 5G pilots back in 2018, 2019, and I followed all the trade regs to find out what concerns people had. And I went before the planning board, and the planning boards kept telling me that they have rules in place for cell towers. And I kept trying to explain to them, "This is different, and you really need some guidelines in place, or they can do whatever they want." There were towns that would, that put out information saying, "Look, we ended up in port over this." They put in things in our town the size of a washing machine with antennas sticking up on the sidewalks. You can't get a plow by it. You, you know, we're seeing small cell antennas that go in telephone poles, but we don't have telephone poles all over Upton. So what are the guidelines? The planning board really needs to put something in place so that we have some guidelines as what's allowed, but isn't allowed, in my opinion. And also, when you looked at the different devices, I can't imagine that it would admit the same RF radiation because it's something the size of a refrigerator or it's something that goes up on a telephone pole, it's different. My concern is, a lot of the stuff the large cities wouldn't allow, so they're probably sitting in a storeroom somewhere. If Upton has nothing in place for guidelines, they might take those washing machine sized things and stick it in our sidewalks so the kids can't use them and the plows can't get by. So I think we need to pause and just take a look at this. The other thing is, is the health concerns. I went to the presentation next door at the church, and the woman who was doing the presenting said, "There was a doctor who had all of these weird symptoms, and there was no explanation for them for patients. He got a radio frequency meter, and he sent it home with people." And they said, "The wireless in the house was really admitting high, they had a lot of wireless devices, and they put wires in all of these things." And they came back, and the issues, especially with children, went away. They're, they're talking about things like mental health problems with kids, depression, DNA issues. So until, someone can say, "Ah, it's got an issue." I'd like to see some results of that before we move forward with it because, I mean, if kids' DNAs or their mental health is at risk, that's a real concern. The, those little gadgets were $200 apiece. And what I would suggest, if we have $400 in the budget somewhere, we buy two of those. We list them on the library as a book, and we check them out, leave them at the police station. People can leave the credit card information, make sure to return. Charge $10 for the use, and we can pay that account back. But people can at least go out and test, you can bring it to the schools just to see what 5G is doing. Because 5G, according to some sites, say it's going to be 10 times worse. So in other words, let's get a, let Upton get a handle on where we are before we move forward. It's a pause, it's not saying, "Don't do it." But I'd like to see things in place. A lot of towns have been in lawsuits, and you know what? Verizon could keep us tied up for a very long time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Bill Andrews, 84 High Street. I'd like to move the question.
Okay, and second to move the question. So, just to be clear, we're going to vote now whether or not to stop the discussion. If you think you've heard enough and you don't want to hear any more discussion, you can end up holding up a green card, okay? If you feel, not yet, if you feel as if you want to hear more discussion, then you'll hold up a red card. This requires a two-thirds majority vote, so think about that as you think about whether you want to hear more or not. Then after that vote happens, I will then explain to you what happens next. So, all of those of you who want to move the question, hold up the green card. Okay, thank you. All those who don't want to move the question, hold up a red card. Okay, the motion to move the question passes by a two-thirds majority. So what's going to happen now is we're going to actually vote on the issue. Again, there are two big presentations. It's about 5G, whether they have it or not to have it. And again, the motion itself does have a waiver here, which has been explained at some point, okay, to a certain level, okay? So that's been explained. So, there's been questions on both sides. I hope you have a pretty good understanding of what it is you have to do.
Sorry, is it two-thirds?
Ah, yes, I was gonna say, yes, I was gonna get to that. And then the last thing is, this does require a two-thirds majority vote. And just so you know, I'm not, I'm obviously not counting every single card that goes up, I'm trying to get a sense of the crowd, okay? This vote is going to be a sense of the crowd in terms of what your vote is, okay? If I can't make the call for two-thirds one way or the other, then we will have a standing vote, which is fine. We've done that before, it's not like we can't do that anymore. So, any questions before we vote? So you understand what you're voting on? Okay, good. So, all those in favor of changing this zoning bylaw dealing with the 5G question, hold up a green card. Are you a registered voter? Oh, I'm sorry, because.
Me?
You're sitting in the right, you are sitting in the section that's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Keep the cards up. Okay. Thank you, put it down. All those opposed, hold up the red card. This does not pass by two-thirds majority. Good. So, that is it. We need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Dissolved, Mr. Moderator, dissolved.
Yes, that's right, two dissolved, thank you. So we need a motion to adjourn and dissolve.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the meeting be dissolved.
Okay, so, there's been a motion to dissolve the meeting, and this will be a voice vote, ladies and gentlemen, for the second. All those in favor of adjourned and dissolving, signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Both no. Most are carried and entered, thank you very much, folks.